From the study session, the city council directed the CEO to retain Richard Watson and Gershom as the labor negotiators for the city. So at this point, I will go ahead and move to adjourn from the study session. That is my motion.
Second.
Been seconded by council member Avila. And any other objections? Seen objections? Move apart. All right. Thank you very much. All right. One moment, please. Let me get this. All right. Thank you. At this point, I'd like to open up the Baldwin Park City Council regular meeting today, September the 18th, 2019. The time is 7:05. I'd like to open up the housing and also the finance authority concurrently as well. So at this point, I'd like to go ahead and before, I'm going to go ahead and have the city clerk, Ms. Gina Yala, conduct the roll call. Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Alejandra Avila.
Here.
Councilmember Paul Hernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Monica Garcia.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to excuse her. Her grandmother's in critical condition in the hospital. That is my motion. Second. Any objections seen on so move.
Mayor Manuel Lozano.
Present. All right. Thank you, city clerk. All right. So at this point, we're going to, I'm not certain if Pastor Flores or Pastor Jackson's here. I'll go ahead and have Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco lead us in an invocation. So I will ask all those that are able to stand to please do so. Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you. And if you could all please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we are gathered here today to do the business of our citizens here in our community. Please, we pray today for peace in the world. All the victims of the national disasters throughout the world and the hurricane victims, the victims of 9/11, all of our firefighters, our police officers, all those that are in the armed forces that serve our country and protect us, that you look over them and keep them safe in order of our own way for the unborn and for all the victims that have suffered in crime and other atrocities throughout the world. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. At this point, we're going to face a flag. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a true republic which stands the nation under God, indivisible, and eternal.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to dedicate and close on behalf of Mrs. Escalera, who passed this past week and it's a family that's been in Baldwin Park for many, many, many years, well-known, participated in many different civic groups throughout the community. So our condolences goes out to the Escalera family. Councilmembers wishing to close on anyone's behalf? All right. If not, at this point, we're going to go ahead and, I don't believe we have any presentations. Proclamations, none listed. We're going to go ahead and go into the public communication. So anyone wishing to speak, you have approximately three minutes and then please state your name. Thank you. Good evening.
Hello, city council residents of Baldwin Park. Hey, Mayor, let me ask you a question. There's a old saying that says what's good for the goose is good for the gander, right? I know you don't know what that means, but I'm going to tell you. When other people were running for election, they brought in signs that had wooden sticks on them. And I notice if I may turn around.
Okay, that's right.
What do they call those? Plastic? Mayor, you make regulations or you so claim, continue them or don't do them at all. You know, what's good for them should have been good for us. So that's one thing. Sam, I called you two weeks ago, three weeks ago about my neighbor's trees. You never called me back. I know your job's to take care of human resources, public works, I'm sorry. So far, a little bit. You should be doing a lot for this city. Mayor and city council, Mr. Pacheco, so on and so on. You people keep talking about beautifying the city. You're doing a piss poor job. Terrible, terrible. You know why? Because I guarantee you, you could drive by something and look at it and say, oh, okay. You know, we live here. So when we call these people, so claim, human resources, to take care of a problem, they should take care of it. I don't mean 2025 because I might not be here, but within a month or less. You got people driving around the city, because we see them, that work for the city. Two people in one truck and picking up nothing. Is that the way you run your household? Seems like it. So far, park and recreation, you're a failure. Park behind my house, or so claimed Nature Park, is a cement park. They poured 15 inches of concrete. I don't know what the hell they're building, but 15 inches. Are you going to put a tank back there or something? Or a jet aircraft? Or maybe a battleship or something like that? I don't say, I'm going to say this, and I'll say it every time I come. You people don't look at nothing in the city. I've never seen any of you down my street. And the only time I've seen the mayor, I told him to get off my property and go down the street. Because he doesn't work for us, he works for himself. Two seconds. Holy shit.
You know what? Let's watch our language, please. All right. Thank you very much. Okay, move along with public communication. Very quick, and I just want to say, Mr. Luna, you are correct about the signage. We do have an ordinance and it applies to everyone. So I'm going to have to ask that the signs be removed. All fairness to this gentleman, because during the campaign, there was signage. So there's an actual ordinance of the city of Baldwin Park. So I would respect that you acknowledge that.
Mayor, if I may. Actually, just remove the stick. You can keep the sign.
Oh, the stick. Okay. All righty.
You could take the stick and have somebody.
And just the banner.
Take it outside.
All righty. I appreciate that. Thank you. Mr. Luna, you are correct on that.
Can it be a warning? We won't do it again?
Sorry about that. Okay. All right. So at this point, and thank you.
Not knowing.
Okay. Go ahead. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Teresa. I'm here again, as we were a couple of weeks ago. I want to read a letter that I sent over to councilmen and yourself, Mayor. I don't know if anybody received it. I did receive some emails back saying, oh, this councilman's or woman's email is full. So maybe you can get some more email if you, you know, delete some of your email. But I went ahead on September 7th and sent the email saying, I just read an article in San Gabriel Valley Tribune about the last council meeting that I was at, which we were trying to, again, you know, get rid of Planned Parenthood in here, city Baldwin Park. As a result of that article, the journalist's research on the topic showed that she pulled up a resolution, a resolution that was adopted back in February 2017 in regards to the city's support of Planned Parenthood. It's not signed in this copy, however, I'm not sure if it was signed or not. Maybe you can enlighten us. So with that, you know, we understand that you eluded, meaning council, back in October 2018 in our first meeting that we were here to let you know, hey, do you know that there's a Planned Parenthood coming into town? You eluded to not knowing anything about it, which pretty much bamboozled us with your rhetoric stating, oh, we don't know anything about it. But yet, in 2017, there was this document created saying, a resolution that the city accounts, the city of Baldwin Park, in support of Planned Parenthood. Also, in that article, the journalist stated that Mayor Manuel Lozano, who said at the Wednesdays, September, I believe it was the 4th, meeting, said that Planned Parenthood is trying to open in the wrong city, quote unquote. It doesn't fit in the city of Baldwin Park and its location across from the church is insulting. That's pretty much quoted from the last meeting, Mayor Lozano. So what is the truth, Mayor and council members? What is your truth? Are you in support of your people, the soul of the city? I do have to say that as pro-lifers, you know, as some people call us, are not only people of Christ, but we're also people of, with our moral compass and check. This check is what keeps us people with souls, keeps our families and our community together, helps us identify right from wrong, and allows justice for all. Without all these checks, our families, community, and the nation would be in constant chaos. So hopefully, you'll take a look at what documents you are signing and what you are saying to us. Thank you.
And we have all these documents, if you want a copy, because it looks like you're confused. Good afternoon. I just came to my attention that you made us remove our signs. And we've been coming here for more than months, asking you to do something about Planned Parenthood. You guys are not doing it. So I don't understand you guys, or you forced me to take my signs outside. And because you, the mayor, we obeyed and we took it outside. So can you do something? We're telling you here, we do not plan, we do not want Planned Parenthood in the city. So when are you going to do something good for our city? I mean, you don't want to leave that city with this legacy that you were the one, that you guys were the one who put Planned Parenthood in the city. We do not want it here. So we have all these documents that you guys have been signing and approving all this information, all this building of the Planned Parenthood. So we need your support. You guys are coming for reelection. Please, we need your help. We need to find out how true you are about pro-life. I was a faithful voter for you guys, especially for you, Ms. Lozano. You're here and there promoting good activities for the students, for the kids. Now, we're asking you here, we do not want Planned Parenthood in the city. So you guys need to do something about it. Yeah, the same way you did this forum, you guys are going to have to help us.
All right. Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, Honorable Mayor, council members, community partners, and community members. My name's Catherine Lozier. I'm the manager of the Baldwin Park Library. Switching gears for just a moment, I wanted to announce three programs, special programs we have coming up in the next couple of weeks. We have for children, a program on, excuse me, creating kaleidoscopes. If they want to do arts and crafts, please come to the library. We have jewelry making for adults next Tuesday. And on Thursday, excuse me, on September 18th, 28th, goodness, we have a teen program. It's Q-tip art. So if you want a little levity, if you want a little arts and crafts, if you want a little something, please stop by and see us at the Baldwin Park Library. We have so much more other than this, so please stop by and see us.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Sharazad, and I live in the city of West Covina. I am here to thank the city of Baldwin Park for allowing the Planned Parenthood clinic to open up here. I am very much opposed to all that we've heard thus far. I am a social worker by trade, and I've seen too many children who are abused and born into situations where they were not wanted initially. So I, excuse me.
Excuse me. Don't interrupt her, please. Stop. Okay, go ahead.
And I just see that too often, and I can't help but sometimes think, you know, if that parent had some support to go ahead and terminate her pregnancy, if this child would have been born into a situation like that. So, and I know, and I work with adoptions as well, I help children get adopted. But the problem, adoption solves some problems but creates others. So it's not fair to bring a child into this world if they're not wanted and that the parents are not ready. So aside from the abortion question, Planned Parenthood is not just about abortion. I've used them for other purposes, and they've saved my life in a couple of occasions. So, and my daughters, they've used them for contraception so that we don't bring children into the world that aren't supposed to be here. So I am very, very grateful for you to stand up to all the pressures that are upon you and to have the courage to allow Planned Parenthood into the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, move along with public communication. Yes, go ahead. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Christine. I'm a resident of Baldwin Park. And it's really, I cannot believe we're having this conversation. I really can't understand it. This is 2019. As a teenager, I can say what I did when I was maybe 17, 18, I forget what it was, but I did not want to have any children. And I took a bus to Planned Parenthood. They were in Pasadena at the time. I knew if I, you know, I did not want to have any children, so I prevented that by having contraceptives. So Planned Parenthood is not just an abortion clinic, let's say. There's so many things that they help, young adults, young people, people that can't afford to have any, can't afford to pay for their contraceptives or medications. Maybe they might have a severe problem, but Planned Parenthood can help that. So I just, really, I'm just amazed that we're still having this conversation. And I don't want to go back to the 10th century, 15th century. So I applaud you for having this and having a conversation, even if I don't agree with the people, most of the people here. But I hope that you do open up to Planned Parenthood. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Good evening.
Hi. My name is Laura Santos. Good evening.
Good evening.
I live in Bassett, but I represent Baldwin Park on the Mount San Antonio College Board. And my comment is that, you know, having a child is a big deal. It's not a little thing. And children deserve, and they have the right to come into the world and be loved and be Planned Parenthood provides a lot of services for young people and for people that are uninsured. I think there'll be less teenage pregnancies, less STDs, and they provide wonderful services. And right now, we know there's a big insurance gap and there's a big need for services such as those. So I wanted to thank the city and the council people and the staff for bringing Planned Parenthood to Baldwin Park. Thank you.
Well, thank you. You're welcome. Thank you. Good evening. Go ahead.
Hello. Good night. My name is Jenny Quintana. I'm a plastic surgeon. And I'm here, I can hear the both sides, so apart from my religious believers, of course, I have my own ideas about many things, but soon I will take a degree in stem cells. That's mean, cellulose mandres. And recently, this Saturday, I've been in a conference. So I will, I'm more interested in the ethic, moral, like doctor, because my duty is save life. So in this conference, it was really interesting. I've been in, the name to the clinic here in this, body system wellness. So of course, everybody there are doctors, talking about money. So something who take my attention is, they say in the presentation, number one, type of stem cells embryonic, from embryos, controversial and big, not legal for commercially. Then, they say, from the umbilical tissue of legally performed C-section child births, not Planned Parenthood. Because we need to buy stem cells from legal laboratories, certifies. Because our number one in the industry is Planned Parenthood. A friend to me told me, oh, come on, don't be worried. The abortion is just 3%. They do much more. Of course, they do much more. Because that hope this work, you need to wear white, doesn't matter who you are inside, how black you are. So Planned Parenthood and United States, thanks to Planned Parenthood, United States, finally start the industry and take the first place. Because the first place in the beginning, it was for Germany. Now, things change here, and now again, Germany have the first place. So this is about numbers. This is about money. This is about industry, especially, but aesthetic. Trust me, stem cells are really, really good. One session, one shoot with me is $10,000, stem cell. So this is about money. This is not about care the people. Somebody say recently, oh, babies who don't supposed to be here. Who are us to decide to say who's supposed to be here? So you can reach online, you can make your own research and find your own information. And yes, Planned Parenthood is a lot, a lot, a lot of money for us. And it's controversial to me because I'm a doctor, my friends are doctors, we are always talking about this. But we promise, number one, is save life, not money. So please, think about it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Good evening.
My name is Noreen Evinor. I am a teacher here at St. John the Baptist. And as a public servant, we need to defend life. A year ago, a year ago, when my father was diagnosed with prostate cancer, the doctors took their time to preserve his life. They did everything that they could because of his heartbeat. We have a heartbeat law, and I would like our public servants to defend that law. We already know the history of Planned Parenthood. We already seen what they've said, and we've heard what the doctor has just shared with us. It's not about providing services. They say they will provide services, ultrasounds, but it's only if you're going to have an abortion. And this weekend, I was talking to one of the construction workers who is now developing the all-state building that is now part of Planned Parenthood. I have to ask, how did that happen when all of us have been talking about the importance of preserving life from its natural conception to its natural death? I know our world is chaotic and upside down, and people are choosing to take the pill to end their life, or they're being tricked into taking a pill so that they can quietly, privately go to their home and have an abortion. But little do they know that they are going to bleed tremendously, and the amount of blood that the women bleed, they think they're dying. Where is Planned Parenthood holding that woman's hand, helping her understand what she's going through? How many people have had abortions and have been too ashamed to say? We need to take a stance. I don't see Planned Parenthood moving into West Covina. I see them coming to those poor communities where other people are coming in saying, let's go into the poor communities. What happened to the Planned Parenthood that was supposed to open in Monrovia? It never opened because people took a stance. We need to take a strong stance and let our voices be known that we stand for life. We honor Giovanni De Pedro. You mentioned Linda Escalera. We lost a firefighter from West Covina under poor circumstances, a botched robbery, a body burned to the point of you cannot identify it. Can you imagine what those families feel with the children who had a heartbeat? And I, I bleed for them. I wish I could have more children. God gave me one, and I made him the best that I can and gave him all the opportunities that I could. I know there are other women who cannot, but give the child a chance. Let him be adopted. And social workers, they too have to do their job and make sure that the children are protected. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Members of the city council, honorable mayor, I, the issue was brought up earlier of this staff report, and I saw this from 2017. I have a copyright here. I'd like to pass it to somebody, maybe, you know, the council would like to review it and confirm with me if this is what exactly happened. February 15th, 2017, subject, a resolution of the city of Baldwin Park in support of Planned Parenthood. Summary, this resolution would offer the city support for Planned Parenthood of Los Angeles, prepared by city attorney. So I don't see, as my colleague earlier stated, it's apparently not signed. There's no record of a's or no's voting against this. I'd just like to know exactly what happened. Maybe the city council clarify. If I could pass this over. Earlier was, well, I'm not, I pretty much have spoken at least twice earlier, so there's not much else I could say, except for just repeating myself. And a statement made earlier, Planned Parenthood saves babies, that's laughable. We all know they kill them. It's all over the news. They sell body parts of children. It's in court testimony now with David Deladen up in San Francisco. He's having hearings now. So, come on, that's just laughable. It was stated earlier that doctors, they have an oath to save life. Well, as lawyers, myself included, city attorney, maybe some of your lawyers up there, we also have a duty under the law. Our laws state, I mean, our basic frameworks of laws, I know I've stated this before, the Declaration of Independence states, our Creator has given us the right to life first, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. So we have to uphold that. It's not a question of us being a particular religion. That's in our law. That applies to us all. Our Constitution, our Fifth Amendment, the Fourteenth Amendment, the right, no state shall deprive any person of the right to life, liberty, or property without due process of law. Every person also has the equal protection of the law. Every person, that's what that law says. Even Roe versus Wade said that if we find that the unborn is a person, then this case falls. Well, how do, how do we, it's obviously a person. We know all that. I mean, at what point are you going to say it's not a person? So Planned Parenthood is clearly here and it doesn't distinguish. They're here about abortion. They're here about selling as many abortions as possible. They don't deserve to be here. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Yeah. Thank you very much. I just want to let everyone know, you could bring the signs in, but not the sticks. So I should have made that clear to everyone. So you are welcome to bring the signs in without the sticks. All right. Thank you very much. I'm moving along. Sorry about that.
Hi, Mary. I'm city council. The last time I was here, I explained to you that my personal experience with Planned Parenthood is that they don't really care about women. That women are seriously injured in those clinics, and they wait till the very last minute to call for help. And then when they do, they use the resources of the city. And I said, what are you going to do about getting more resources here if Planned Parenthood comes? Because more emergency calls are going to be going to that clinic. It's not just my testimony. If you go on YouTube and Google Abby Johnson, she testifies from her experience as a Planned Parenthood director, that she was instructed not to call for help unless it was absolutely necessary, and that women were sent home bleeding and very ill. That's the way they operate. They do not care about women. They care about abortions. And that statistic of 3% is a false statistic. You guys know that all statistics can be manipulated to your own desires. What they did was they took every single procedure they ever do, and then they divided up, they came up with 3%. But when they do an abortion, they have to do a pregnancy test, they have to do ultrasound, they have to do blood work, they have to do a number of procedures. They got four or five procedures already before the abortion, and then they come up with 3%. Of course, they're going to come up with 3%. Five to one. Of course, they're going to come. It shows you that actually, when they use that way of coming up with their 3%, that most of the procedures are abortions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. [applause][1742.88]
And that statistic of 3% is a false statistic. You guys know that all statistics can be manipulated to your own desires. What they did was they took every single procedure they ever do, and then they divided up, they came up with 3%. But when they do an abortion, they have to do a pregnancy test, they have to do ultrasound, they have to do blood work, they have to do a number of procedures. They got four or five procedures already before the abortion, and then they come up with 3%. Of course, they're going to come up with 3%. Five to one. Of course, they're going to come up. It shows you that actually, when they use that way of coming up with their 3%, that most of the procedures are abortions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. All right, thank you very much. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Carmen Camacho. I have cerebral palsy, I come from Duarte. I was raped, and because of that rape, I conceived a baby. I went to get help, and right away, the only they care is kill the baby. Kill the baby, that's all you can do. They didn't care about how I felt, how I suffered, all they care is kill that baby. I didn't kill my baby. I have a beautiful 52-year-old woman that is a mother of two beautiful children. And all I want to tell you is, in your conscience will go, no one killing but a generation. Because if I kill my baby, if I had killed her, I would have killed my generation. And hopefully, I'll be able to live to see my great-grandkids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Frank Ebner, and a lot of people who talked about Planned Parenthood today, and today I'd like to just talk about honesty. I think that's probably something we can all agree on. Councilmember Hernandez, would that be something you could agree on? Honesty is a virtue that people should have? Yeah, I think maybe Mary Lozano, I mean, we want everybody to be honest. Councilmember Avila Pacheco. Yeah, I mean, that's just sort of a trait that we would expect, you know, from each other. And Planned Parenthood, you know, makes a lot of claims, and we can all make claims. And only under certain situations do we decide, you know, are we going to maybe tell the truth? So in 2015, September 2015, actually, September 2015, Cecile Richards, who was president of Planned Parenthood, was testifying in Congress where she made, you know, false claims or testified by lying, she would have been, you know, in serious water, you know, under perjury. So one of the claims is, you know, all children wanted. Well, since Planned Parenthood and abortion have become legal, the number of children that are unwanted has skyrocketed. Services, they provide services. Yeah, they provide services. In 1960, there were five STDs known to humankind. Today, in 2019, there's 50, more than 50. Okay? The services that are provided have escalated the problem. A blob of tissue, yeah, it's just a blob of tissue. A blob by definition means like uncoordinated, you know, not anything organized. 10 weeks old, this is the size of what we were at 10 weeks. 11 weeks, this doesn't look very uncoordinated. That looks pretty organized to me. That's what we were. Heartbeat starts at four weeks. Yeah, we were a blob, we were a tissue, but not a blob of tissue, we were organized brain tissue, organized liver tissue, organized tissue for skin, we have facial hair starting at 11 weeks. Organized. They're a 501(c)(3) company or nonprofit. Cecile Richards had to testify in 2015 that they had 100, and let me make sure I get this right, $127 million in excess revenue, what we would normally call profit, and they spent $40 million of that on travel and parties. Is that a 501(c)(3) that we want in our community? Do you want in our community a group that is dishonest? I don't know, I mean, ask yourself. We're all going to be part of this if we allow them to stay, or we can try to prevent them forever opening up. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hello, good evening.
Good evening, my name is Varede Pacheco, and I am a resident of Baldwin Park. And I too would like to echo what some have been saying here, as I am against Planned Parenthood. I know that several issues have been brought up about teenage pregnancy and STDs and child abuse, and I have to say that putting a clinic that kills children is not the solution to that. And that Planned Parenthood also, that Planned Parenthood limits us, and it limits our imagination as leaders. As leaders, we are called to bring a culture of life and a culture that supports all types of life. And as a woman, I also have to say that it should be a clinic that supports women's health and doesn't try to damage it. And so instead of bringing Planned Parenthood, a clinic that is going to abort babies, we should bring a clinic that is going to support mothers, and that is going to support mothers after their baby is born. We're only thinking about that moment, but we're not thinking about the future of our children, and we're not thinking about the future of our community. So the question becomes is, Planned Parenthood, what does that say about what Baldwin Park believes? What does that say about the kind of culture that we want to teach our children? Are we going to teach them that when we want to solve a problem, that we just kill it? Are we going to teach them that when we want to solve a problem, that we take innovative approaches to it, and that we find a solution? Because if there is a will, there is a way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes, necesito intérprete.
Yes, you want to go ahead and, si sigue hablando de ahí, al terminar, va a interpretar la secretaria.
Al terminar.
Yes.
Okay. En primer lugar, le doy gracias a Dios por no haber nacido en un tiempo donde no había una maquinaria tan diabólica de aborción, ya me entiendes? En segundo lugar...
Puede hablar más cerca, se le...
En primer lugar, le doy gracias a Dios no haber nacido en un tiempo donde no había una maquinaria diabólica de aborción, ya, que promovía el aborto, ya. Y segundo lugar, tengo seis meses y haber comprado casa aquí en Valdeunpar. Vengo de Bel, Bel Garden y Downey, donde he conocido muchos gobiernos corruptos, ya. Y el último viví en Bel Garden, donde fui parte de la campaña para remover al alcalde que había ahí, Porinecto, ya. El asunto es que tuve un pequeño problema aquí donde vivo yo. Vine aquí a comunicárselo a la policía, y la policía me dijo que no sabía qué código implementar. En primer lugar, la persona que me atendió, no sé cómo debe llamarle, Anglozajón, Caucasian, o no sé, ya, el que me atendió en primer lugar, me quedó viendo de mala manera, no sé por qué, ella me entiende, probablemente por mi aspecto latino, o qué sé yo, ya. Y no me cobijo bajo ese punto, no le tengo miedo a nadie, ya. Pero el segundo, salió un policía latino, el cual me dijo que, pues no sabía qué código implementar. El problema es que ahí pasan camiones sobre la calle que yo vivo, es residencial, y pasan camiones de más de 40,000 libras. Y si estoy aquí hoy, es porque hay camiones de gas propano, no sé, como una compañía de unos tanques verdes, ya. Estaba saliendo yo con mi nieta del driveway de mi casa, en lo que venía dando vuelta ese camión. Ya ni siquiera que es porque es de gas propano, sino la velocidad también con que viene. Tuve que frenar recio, porque como, digamos, yo vivo en unas, en un cuarto de bloque de la esquina, en lo que lo miré dar vuelta, ya lo tenía encima, tuve que frenar recio para que no me atropellara. Usted se imagina, cualquier, usted vive tranquilamente en su casa, no creo que pase un camión de eso por ahí, ya. Y pues vine el martes pasado, vine a comunicárselo otra vez, y tampoco saben qué hacer.
Okay.
Esa es mi queja, y quisiera decirle que voy a llegar hasta donde sea. No hablo muy bien el inglés, por eso no me dirijo a usted en el inglés, para no ofenderlo, ya.
Está bien.
Pero quisiera que hicieran algo, y si no, pues yo llego hasta donde sea para ver quién lo puede hacer, ya me entiendes.
Okay, muy bien. All right, so at this point, Lulu, you want to go ahead and translate? Thank you. Puedes esperar, por favor, también, si estás amable. Okay, thank you. Yeah, he said, we will. But go ahead, Lulu, then I'll go on to that.
Good afternoon. The first thing is, I want to thank God for not being born in a time where diabolical abortions were well advertised. I have lived in many cities like Bel Gardens, and I was part of the campaign to remove corrupt government. I have an issue, I'm here to speak about an issue. I spoke to the police department, and they said they could not identify which ordinance to enforce. I spoke to an officer who did not understand and didn't know how to address my concern. The next officer was Latino, and he too didn't understand how to enforce and address my concern. And I am here to say that there are high-speed trucks with gasoline.
Yes, go ahead.
And the velocity they came on our oncoming traffic was with a very high speed. I was with my granddaughter, and I had to stop rapidly in order to prevent an accident. I came again on Tuesday, and the police didn't know what to do on Tuesday either, and I will not stop and would like for you to do something.
All right, thank you. Chief, real quick, we got assigned someone to interview, the gentleman, and get his address, and also follow up with a report to the city council, okay?
Yes, Mayor.
All right, thank you. So, habla una de las departamentos policías que no esté hoy. So we could get that information, I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Thank you, Herrera. All right, thank you. Moving along with public communication.
Good evening. My name is Anne Hennessy, and I'm here to urge you to do what you can to keep Planned Parenthood out of your city. It damages women, and there's no reason on God's earth to take the life of an innocent human being who is irreplaceable and unique. Not only does it do this, but I'm particularly concerned about the sex education that it will be offering to the students in your city. It's very damaging. And one of the very significant things it does is it drives a wedge between the children and the parents. The parents have no idea what they're teaching them. It's very, very damaging. Their stated goal is that when children get to a sexual age, that they'll just automatically go onto birth control. Life is about more than that. That's not what the majority of parents are hoping for their children. Also, they can be taken to Planned Parenthood from their schools for an abortion without informing the parent. We don't need them here. Planned Parenthood is not needed and is not wanted in Baldwin Park.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Good evening, sirs and madams. My name is Russ Babbitts. I respect your choice to allow Planned Parenthood in your city under your laws, under the laws of the United States that allow them to exist and provide services to the women that choose to attend them. That's their choice. Our laws protect them to have a choice. They are allowed under the Constitution, the rules, the decisions of the Supreme Court. If these services are not provided, we know what has happened in the past in back alleys and butcher's rooms that have killed women that have gone for abortions from people that don't know what they're doing. The prior gentleman appeared to indicate that there are more STDs because Planned Parenthood. We know, of course, that is not true. There are more STDs because they're more identified. And certainly, people need health care. People go there for health care. There are not enough clinics that provide health care at low cost. If the people in this audience that are clapping want to provide the services that they encourage, I encourage them to start such an organization in your city that also conforms to your laws and your rules and zoning. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, moving along with public communication. Good evening. Good evening, sir.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Jose Mendoza, vivo aquí en Valdeunpar. Tengo dos años y medio viviendo más o menos. Ahorita venimos de dar una clase a los papás de primera comunión y de confirmación. Creo que las personas que queremos que no se ponga Planned Parenthood es porque somos personas de provecho. Usted es observador, igual que yo. Usted ve los gestos de reprobación o las burlas de ciertas personas aquí. Creo que no se vale. Hay que tener un cierto respeto, y usted las ve de frente. Entonces, ¿de qué se trata? Respeto a cada persona por la dignidad humana. Ustedes rigen el gobierno o la ciudad por leyes jurídicas. Es muy importante. Conocemos ética, conocemos moral. Pero hay algo más importante aquí. Hay una sabiduría que nos rebasa, una sabiduría del cual tenemos que estar regidos tanto ustedes como yo, para respetar la dignidad humana. Ver desde dónde nace el respeto a la vida, de dónde viene la vida, y ese es trabajo de cada quien, de las personas que están aquí, de las personas que están acá. Entonces, somos responsables de buscar la verdad a como dé lugar. Entonces, quiere decir que, por ejemplo, si yo me pongo a hablar de lo que es el alma humana, inteligencia, voluntad, conciencia, libertad, sensibilidad, afectividad, pasiones, emociones, conocemos cada una, cómo funcionan dentro de nosotros. Imaginemos 24 billones de corpúsculos corriendo por las 90,000 kilómetros de Venas, por el corazón, bombeando y dando vida. Eso lo tenemos que saber, porque es parte de la dignidad humana y es parte del ser. Conocer, conocemos a nosotros mismos. Entonces, una cosa es leyes jurídicas, perfecto, muy bien. Otra es la religión que quiere y busca la verdad, pero hay una sabiduría mayor. Ahora, yo les pregunto si ustedes trabajarían en un centro abortivo, o permitirían que trabajara allí una hija de ustedes? No lo sé. Pero si esto se lleva a dar a cabo, yo lo considero como un fracaso para cada uno de ustedes. Un fracaso. Estar como líderes y permitir esos asesinatos, vámonos buscando la verdad cada uno de nosotros. Nuestra Constitución del ser humano, ¿qué valor tiene? Entonces, yo respeto a todas las personas, y las quiero, y las amo, para ese trabajo. Me voy a ir tres años a estudiar, ¿para qué? Para servir a la comunidad. Ese es mi deber, esa es mi pasión. Entonces, cada vez que vamos a rezar ahí, lo hacemos con mucha serenidad, con mucha tranquilidad, pasan ciertas personas y nos agreden. O sea, ¿por qué? Simplemente que pase, no? Nosotros no agredimos a nadie. Gracias.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you very much. At this point, we're going to have our deputy city clerk, Lulu.
Good evening, my name is Jose Mendoza. I have lived here in Baldwin Park for two years. I just got back from communion class, and I'm here to say that we are against the Planned Parenthood Clinic. You need to have certain respect for human dignity. You govern laws, but there is a higher intelligence greater than us. Where does life come from? That is our responsibility to find the answer. We know emotions and how emotions and intelligence work. We know how blood flow works, and we have the dignity to understand how it works. Would you allow an abortion clinic, sorry, would you work in an abortion clinic, or would you allow one of your daughters to work there? To be leaders and to allow these abortions would be a failure. What values would you have? I have studied for three years for the community to give back to the community, and we pray in a very peaceful way, and we do have backlash from people, but we continue.
All right, thank you very much. All right, thank you. Good evening.
I wanted to speak out against Planned Parenthood. I got pregnant as a teenager. I went to one of their offices, and of course, the test came out positive. And at that time, they did not ask me how I felt, they did not ask me anything of my will, I think, but instead, right away off the bat, they asked me if I wanted to abort my baby. I don't know how they could ask, how I could have killed him, just like that. They told me that I couldn't do anything if I had him. I'm still in college, yes, it's taken me a long road, but guess what? I have no regrets. Thank God I had everybody behind my back, but the Planned Parenthood... Thank God I had everybody behind my back, but the Planned Parenthood had my back? No. Instead, they said that I couldn't do anything. They asked me three times if I wanted to kill him. Obviously, I said no. I don't know what type of support they give women or how they empower women by scaring them and telling them that they can't do anything. We have many clinics around this area that can give contraceptives or whatever it is. They don't have to go there to Planned Parenthood. They even give free health care to illegal people, okay? To anybody. So, I don't know what they're even talking about. I don't know. I know that they were very mad at me for not going in because I know they lost a lot of money. Okay? I don't know how you want your city to thrive if you're going to allow them to kill our generation. I don't know how you want children and all your projects to work out if they're going to be in here trying to intimidate our minority Latinos, okay? Obviously, everybody here has a right to choose. Why? Because we were not aborted. We have a choice. We have an option. I just want you to know that what they do is abortions. About three years ago, I called Planned Parenthood for a test in El Monte. I asked them if this test could be done. They told me no, that I had to go to another clinic. And what was it? It was a simple pap smear, okay?
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right, good evening.
Translator, please.
Yes. Oh, is he on? Okay, thank you.
You're speaking in Spanish?
Yes.
La primer cosa es que, buenas noches para todos los que están aquí. Otra cosa es que les di una copia de lo que estamos buscando, el permiso para que esas personas trabajen ahí en la Puente Avenue, donde las mañanas es un cochinero de el humor de marihuana.
First of all, I want to wish everybody a good evening. The second thing I want to discuss is I gave you a copy of the permit that you gave to those people working on Puente Avenue. The smell is irresistible.
Una de las cosas que el abogado que tenemos no sirve para nada.
One of the things is that the attorney we have is no good for nothing.
Otra cosa que ya llevo bastante tiempo con él, otra cosa es el code enforcement que tenemos.
We've had a while with the attorney, and another thing is code enforcement.
Code enforcement estaba mejor bajo los policías porque ellos hacían su trabajo. No era el trabajo de ellos de levantar muebles ni nada de las operadas. Ellos son code enforcement.
Code enforcement was better under the police department. It wasn't their job to pick up furniture or anything.
Hace más de dos meses que le dije al señor Gutierrez de unos muebles que están pegados allí. Limpiaron pegado allí sobre el parking lot de Kaiser, pero dejaron todo el cochinero en la pura cubra allí. Ya tiene más de dos meses esos muebles allí. Otros muebles.
More than two months ago, I called Mr. Gutierrez and informed him about some couches that are over there by Kaiser. They cleaned out the area all around Kaiser. However, they still left the furniture around the curb area.
Por la Ramona Drive, es en una vuelta por allí, y van a hallar un cochinero también allí. Levantaron poco, pero dejaron todavía la mitad.
On Ramona Parkway, there's also a mess. They picked up some of the mess, but they still left a lot there.
La cosa es que la gente, como dijo el señor Luna, que andan los trabajadores de la ciudad queriendo hacer algo y no hacen nada, nomás andan para arriba y para abajo. Yo no le echo la culpa a ellos. Le echo la culpa a las personas que están encargadas.
Like Mr. Luna said, the employees of the city, they just drive up and down and they don't do anything. I don't blame them. I blame the people in charge of them.
Otra cosa que el CEO, el Shannon, yo le llamé hace más de dos meses que tuve batallas con ellos y los inspectores de la, the safety, que los inspectores tenían que arreglar una cosa, dijeron que tenía un patio.
Another thing, I called Shannon a while back about the inspectors because I was told that I had to fix a patio.
La cosa es que, haciendo comprar la casa yo, no había nada de extracción de patio ni nada. El inspector no sirve para nada.
I purchased the home that way. There wasn't an inspection for the patio. The inspectors are no good.
Otra cosa es que, como la gente que viene aquí a reclamar de las cosas que estamos permitiendo aquí en la ciudad está muy mal.
Another thing is the, what the, the thing the people are here about is the things that we're allowing here are no good.
Vienen personas de otras ciudades y dicen que está bien acá. Que se vayan para atrás para West Covina. ¿Por qué está en, en, en bancarrota West Covina? Por la misma razón.
People from other cities come here and they say it's okay that it's here, but why don't they take that back to West Covina? Why do you think West Covina is bankrupt?
Una de las cosas que tenemos que mirar, que tenemos que juntarlos como comunidad y bajarlos ustedes de allí de las sillas que están allí porque no están haciendo el trabajo para la comunidad. Puras mentiras lo están diciendo.
What we need to do is gather as a community and take everybody from up there down because you're not doing what is best for the community.
Las mentiras que los dice el señor Lozano, todo tiempo los dice una cosa y otra cosa. Andas allí en el, en la fair y todo, que esto, que el otro agarre un retrato conmigo. La cosa es que lo que diga usted es lo que debe hacer, pero tiene que perseguir las reglas de todos.
Another thing, Mr. Lozano, is the lies that you tell us. You go to the fair and you say hi to everybody and you take pictures with everybody. What you say is what your word that you need to keep.
All right, thank you very much. Moving along with public communication. Yes.
Good evening, city council. My name is Ray Jacobs. Came in tonight with some remarks prepared and decided I didn't like them, strapped them. And I was listening to people talk around here. I'm a science teacher and things that people said just made me twitch. If you were looking at me, you might have heard, you might have seen some of my facial expressions when people said things like, "This is a massive organized tissue." Plants are masses of organized tissue. There's somebody that didn't understand statistics. Forty-two percent of Planned Parenthood's services are STD screenings. Thirty-four percent are providing contraceptives. Nine percent are cancer screenings. I don't understand where a cancer screening would go into an abortion, but that gentleman seemed to think so. People were quoting, let's do name Deliden or Delayden. I'm not sure how you pronounce it, but I was looking him up and he seems to have the credibility of Andrew Wakefield. So, there's people saying that Planned Parenthood sells fetal tissue. There is, to their credit, exactly one clinic in the United States that participates in fetal research. Every tissue sample is sold for $60. Not a lot of money. It's non-California. Consent from others required, and it's in line with federal law. And I thought about correcting some more of the misconceptions, but I'd need like four hours and a whiteboard and about 45 markers to go through all that. So, I decided I don't want to do that. So, I just want to say thank you for allowing Planned Parenthood to come to your city.
Thank you. All right, moving along with public communication.
Buenas noches a todos.
Noches.
Bendiciones para cada uno de ustedes.
Noches.
Yo vengo también a protestar que no queremos la clínica de abortos aquí en la ciudad de Baldwin Park. Ya estamos cansados de tanta muerte que está pasando hoy en día con los niños que están siendo abusados. Por favor, yo vengo de corazón a pedirles su ayuda como representante que son ustedes, tienen todo el poder para hacerlo. Queremos que, por favor, además es un respeto, es un insulto para nuestra iglesia católica y la iglesia de Cristo que está enfrente, que eso se venga a practicar acá. Ya estamos cansados de tanta muerte que ha habido. Queremos parar todo esto. Ellos lo hacen ver fácilmente como que no está pasando nada, como que es fácil. Cuando Dios ha creado la vida, cuando un embrión está fortaleciéndose, está moviéndose adentro. Es una célula. Es una vida que Dios ha creado por una unión, por un error, por un problema que haya pasado o por una violación o cualquier otra cosa. Las personas buscan ayuda, pero ¿qué van a hacer? Van a matar esa criatura que ya se está formando, que ya está, esa criatura moviéndose. No, 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 no. Lo hacen ver como que es fácil, como es cualquier cosa que está removiendo. Es una vida, un testimonio. Mi esposa le hicieron un procedimiento en Planned Parenthood. ¿Qué pasó? La dañaron sus miembros adentro. Ahora... ¿Qué queremos tener una familia con mi esposa? Es imposible. El daño que ha sufrido psicológicamente por ese daño que le hizo Planned Parenthood, la tramó. Pero gracias a Dios, lo puedo superar en nombre de Dios. Pero me muro que el daño que le hicieron en su matriz, en su vientre, eso no se pudo reparar porque Planned Parenthood la dañó toda. Y ahora que queremos una familia, no podemos tener una familia. Yo, por favor, les pido en nombre de Dios que detengan esas clínicas, por favor, de muerte, porque son clínicas de muerte que son, la ciudad no da ningún perno a Quiere. Es un insulto para nuestra iglesia católica. Por favor, si creemos en Dios, que Dios forma hombre y mujer y nos dio la vida, él tiene derecho a quitarla nuestra gente que está poniendo esas clínicas, que lo hacen ver fácilmente como que nada. No, por favor. Muchas gracias y que Dios los bendiga. Tome en consideración, por favor.
Thank you. All right, our deputy, deputy city clerk, Lulu, thank you.
Good evening.
One moment, one moment, one moment. Go ahead.
Good evening and God bless. I too am here to protest the clinic. I come with an open heart to request your help to stop this. It is an insult for our Catholic Church and all the killings. God created a life who is moving regardless of the case. What you are, what are you going to do? Kill the baby that is already moving? It is a life. My wife had a procedure done in Planned Parenthood, and now me and my wife struggled to conceive. And she overcame the issue, but the damage to her body was done and could not be repaired. We could not conceive and have a family. It is an insult. And if we believe in God, we need to allow, we need to allow them to not perform those killings here. Thank you and God bless.
All right, thank you very much. All right, thank you. Go ahead.
Buenas noches.
Buenas noches.
Mi nombre es, disculpe que hable despacio porque no puedo hablar bien. Mi nombre es Hortensia Pulido. Vengo de México, de una familia de 13 hijos, y los que vemos son hermanos. Y nunca nos faltó de comer nada. Yo tengo siete hijos, y todos mis hijos han ido al colegio y a la universidad. Y son hombres y mujeres de bien que están trabajando para el gobierno, para la educación. Y yo, ante todos los presentes, más los que hablan español, pido perdón porque yo fui engañada por minorancia por esos nombres científicos que le ponen al aborto en las clínicas. Yo era las que trabajé en una clínica de esas. Yo lavaba los instrumentos. Yo molía a los niños. Yo miré descuartizar. Yo jugaba con los como si fueran muñequitos. Las piernitas, los deditos. Los niños destrozados estuvieron en mis manos. Yo miré abortos. No eran abortos, eran legrados con unas frases muy científicas que no conocía. No era nada. Para la medicina no era nada. No tiene vida. Y yo no cae en esas redes malignas. Ojalá que ninguno de ustedes tenga esa desgracia de que sus hijas o sus nietas vayan engañadas a hacerse el aborto porque como no hay vida, como no tiene, como es una célula, como es un pedazo de carne, no tiene vida. Pues ese, ese pedacito de carne, yo lo tuve en mis manos y yo fui parte de ese, de esos asesinatos que me afectan mucho a mí porque no sabía, no sabía hacer nada y me tapaban la boca con tantas habladurias, tantas cosas. Y también me, ¿por qué tienes tantos niños? Ya estás grande. Van a hacer deformes. Abortalo.
Okay, gracias. Muchas gracias.
Por favor, me suplico. Perdón.
All right, at this point, we're going to go ahead and have our deputy city clerk, Ms. Lulu. You could go ahead and do the translation. Thank you.
My name is Hortensia. I'm sorry I didn't get her last name. I come from Mexico, from a family of 13 kids, and we never lacked food. I have seven kids, and they all have gone to college and never lacked anything, men and women of good who work for governments and the betterment of the community. I am here to ask for forgiveness. I was lured by clinics or by scientists, by doctors. I worked in those clinics.
Oh, and shame.
Excuse me, excuse me. No, do not interrupt. Do not interrupt.
I heard you.
Do not interrupt. Stop. Stop. All right, go ahead.
I worked in those clinics and mashed their bodies and washed all the utensils used in abortions. I saw abortions. I held the bits and pieces of those babies' bodies. Scientifically, they are nothing, but they were babies. I hope your kids and granddaughters are never lured to commit an abortion. I am greatly affected by the things I have seen and the bodies that I have seen. They told me to abort my kids when I was older, but I didn't because I was high-risk.
All right, thank you very much. All right, so at this point, moving on with public communication. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Oh, and shame. I heard your response. For the well-being of the community. You understand the word well-being? Planned Parenthood, NRA, say the same thing for the well-being. Is there not enough blood in the streets of America? Is there not enough blood for you, America? But we have, and we fight for our right to choose. My friends, there's no middle ground between life and death. There's choices we make each day of our lives. Can we live with that? No, we can't live with that. The NRA, Planned Parenthood tells you, "I want the right to choose who lives and dies." They go into the malls with their guns, the right to bear arms, and they choose who's going to live. These officers today, armed, have to make a choice between life and death. They have to perceive the danger and make a choice now. Is it life? Is it life or death? And they have to perceive what is the threat. Planned Parenthood says the threat is allowing, allowing who is to live and to die. Is the innocent allowed to live? Are those who are least protected allowed to live? No, we want the right and choose. Sounds like the NRA. But I tell you, woe to those who have no conscience. Well-being, well-being to put a slaughterhouse in our community and it's well-being. I doubt it. But each of us, each of us must make those decisions. There's no middle ground between life and death. And whoever you are, Christian or non-Christian, we must go.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate that.
And explain ourselves.
Thank you, thank you very much.
My name is Nancy Knight and I'll be very, very brief. I have a message for the science teacher. He says that, uh, he criticized the speaker who mentioned that the unborn child in the womb is organized. The cells are organized into the different parts. And he said, a plant, a vegetation, a plant has cells and they're organized. Well, guess what? That plant isn't gonna grow up to be a human person. Thank you.
Buenas noches.
Buenas noches.
My name is Lupe Landín and I have lived here in Baldwin Park for thirty years. I honestly, I worked in City Hall for a little bit of time. And honestly, I believe that having a Planned Parenthood clinic here in Baldwin Park would be going the wrong way. You know, we have to stay honest. I heard someone say before, if somebody's heart is not ticking, he's dead. Well, check the baby in the woman's womb. The heart is ticking, it's the first thing that ticks. And you know, God gave me one child without doing much. I wanted a second baby and I did fifteen years of infertility clinic. You guys realize how frustrating and how degrading those tests are? And then you see women killing their babies, their blessings from God. Please stop it, please listen to us. We don't want, send that plant clinic to West Covina, somewhere else, not in Baldwin Park if they need it. Please, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, thank you very much. At this point, anyone else wishing to speak? I'm not, I will now declare the public communication closed. Let me, first of all, make reference to this, um, this staff report that, I believe it was by Ms. Terry that passed it out. Um, yes, that, that, this was passed unanimously by the city council at the time. It was brought to the actual, um, uh, consent calendar by then council member Susan Rubio, our current senator. And it was voted unanimously at the time, uh, by, uh, council, uh, the, well, her motion as the mayor, we also passed it. So it was council member Cruz Baca, council member Monica Garcia, and council member Ricardo Pacheco. Now, it was not, to make it very clear, it was not based on the fact to allow that clinic to come to the city of Baldwin Park. So I want to make that very clear. What it was is to support, because the president was looking, President Trump was looking at defunding the program that services over a hundred and fifty thousand people in Los Angeles County. This is why it was sent, to make that very clear, so that everyone knows. And, and thank you for bringing this up, Terry. So this is something very important. However, I want to make something very clear, the, the quote that I stated, which Mayor Manuel Lozano, who said at Wednesday's meeting, Planned Parenthood is trying to open in the wrong city. It does, it does not fit in Baldwin Park and its location across from the church is insulting. And I added, and I stand by those words because that is, that is what, what I meant to this day. However, at the same time, to let everyone know, back in twenty seventeen, there was no direction, nor did we know that this Planned Parenthood was going to buy that, that parcel and where they're at at this point. So I just want to make that very, very clear, uh, so that everyone's, uh, well aware. Um, and it was mentioned by a gentleman here earlier. We are the local municipal government. We took a note of office representing the state of California. So we have a moral obligation to make certain that we also enforce the Constitution of the United States. No one here on the dais, no one here on the dais can simply say, I don't want a particular business. It doesn't work that way. There's potent, there's liabilities, there are potential lawsuits and so on and so forth. If that were the case, then this would not be a democratic society. So I want to make that very clear to everyone. So no one here, no one has a right on this city council to deny everyone the right. Of course, they applied, as I had mentioned, uh, from the beginning, and we couldn't deny them. They went through the process and went through every procedure, so they, of course, have the right to be able to locate, despite the fact that we have differences in opinion. And I understand that. I mentioned, maybe some of you weren't here, I run at the Santa Fe Dam and I was approached by a young female who stated she was from the city of Baldwin Park. I thought she was there to greet me. Well, she let me have it and told me very clearly, mayor, you have no right to govern my body. And that's what, and I shared that with everyone here. Now, we obviously know that there is two different opinions. You know, one's, one's opinion is, 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 uh, pro-life and one that's pro-choice. And what makes this society so unique is that we are able to practice what we want based on this constitution. This is not, this is not an authoritarian type of government where one thing goes and that's final. And that's what makes us very unique. Certainly, I have my personal opinion, like all the council individuals that were here at that, at that specific time when we made that, that choice. And I, I will say that the councilwoman made the right choice at the time, not knowing this, this president, who I personally do not support, uh, his philosophy, because he is anti-me, anti, anti-Mexicano, as we know that. And that's a, and that's a reality of where we stand and we made that decision. So I want to make that, uh, so that everyone, everyone is well, is well aware. Now, again, I stand by my quote and, and as the mayor of the city of Baldwin Park. And also to understand as the mayor of Baldwin Park, I need to make sure that I hear every voice and not make a, a, a decision based on my personal philosophy, because I took an oath to that flag right there. That's who I took allegiance to as the mayor of Baldwin Park and every council member that's here, regardless of the types of decisions that we may have. So I just want to end on that note. Let me also make something very clear about the person over here who comes up here, always leaves because he doesn't, never allows me to make a comment. And I just simply said, it's unfortunate that he comes up here and just outright lies. But the Constitution of the United States of America allows that person to come up here and lie and spread whatever they want about any council member. We have no recourse. I can't sue, no one can sue. The reality is that that's part of the constitution of this country. And we obviously know that we all have differences of opinion and, and hopefully somehow we could meet in the middle. Now, I stand by my comment that I think it's in the wrong place and I wish it was in Baldwin Park. But the reality is that they did everything, uh, uh, through the city ordinance and the constitution that protects every business in the city and throughout the country as well. So I do want to, I want to end on that note. Council members, anyone else wishing to make any comments?
Uh, yes, mayor, wanna, uh, thank you. I want to thank all those that came out tonight, continue to, to come out to express your opinion. And I just wanted to clarify a couple of things again, just to reemphasize. You could bring your signs, but just don't bring them on a stick. So that's what we were trying to say. You could have took the stick off and just brought it back in. Uh, and also I got the letter that someone in the audience wrote about that particular resolution. And yes, I'll support the mayor on that. Uh, it was brought in at a time that there were some other differences of opinion with the presidential issues that were going on at that time. Uh, it wasn't meant, and I didn't know at the time, now it was then councilwoman Susan Rubio who brought that forth and brought it to the, to the council and then I think it was under, uh, possibly under, was it under consent calendar?
Yes, it was under consent.
Okay, so there wasn't really time for discussion, a lot of things in consent just get passed in that, in that particular manner. Um, but in that particular resolution, it does not say that there was gonna come a Planned Parenthood to the city of Baldwin Park. Otherwise, the vote would have, would have probably been different. But what I can do is I will bring it back to register my vote on how I feel about that particular resolution, because now that I know that their goal was to come and bring that organ, that clinic here, I would register my vote, because that doesn't show how people voted for that particular, uh, uh, resolution. But we can, we can bring it back and then we can have a discussion, uh, about it at that time. Um, and with respect here, where, where I think, with the mayor, where him and I differ, I think that, um, uh, I don't support the, the organization in what it represents. I think that the name Planned Parenthood, uh, it, it doesn't really explain what, what, because they're obviously not planting families, they're destroying families. Their philosophies on sex education just differ with, uh, I, with my opinion on what, uh, you know, how to teach sex education. There, there's just a lot of, um, uh, issues that I have with them. I know I've talked to some, uh, uh, some paramedics recently that talk about the issues that occur in Planned Parenthood, when they're doing abortions and when they're bloched, and how the, you know, the, uh, paramedics have to come in and take that person somewhere, you know, somewhere else. Uh, I differ with those that have an opinion about life and about, uh, an unborn baby. And, and I will talk to you about that because I'll walk you through, um, and if I have to educate you on how a baby is born at, uh, you know, its conception and, and walk down, someone's showing pictures here about, uh, that it was the unborn baby and the different phases as it goes through, uh, each week. It's, it's a human being, it's life, and it's something that we have to learn to defend and, and we need to, we need to, we need to have this conversation with, you know, on a broader basis and talk more about what it's actually, there's more scientific facts today than when Roe versus Wade was brought about, you know, in the seventies, about, uh, what life is, and there's more evidence that it's life. And other than that, I mean, here, look, it's born, you know, it's a baby and it's born human, I mean, what else, you know, can you say? It's, it's, it has a heartbeat, it has brainwaves, it has all the scientific, and, and, you know, throughout the years I've been studying and looking at, you know, the, the birth of the baby and watching it grow, and it's just, it's a beautiful thing, I mean, why are we gonna destroy that? You know, I have, uh, three children, I have, uh, you know, if anything, you know, I, I support women's rights a hundred percent. There's any guy in this city, it's me, because I put a lot of effort in my two daughters. One of them is a vice principal right now, uh, of a school, uh, highly educated, you know, and I paid for her education. My other daughter is a, a, just finished a gra, uh, an undergraduate degree in psychology and she's working with helping, uh, with children in that area. I have a beautiful eight-year-old son playing, uh, flag football. You know, th- this is our future, these are the, the ones that are gonna grow up and participate in government. And, uh, you know, I mean, I can go on for hours, I won't, I won't do that, and, and talk to you about where I think Planned Parenthood is good. I think we should have, and, and my daughter was here speaking earlier, why not have Planned Parenthood change its philosophy and support mothers to be able to have, uh, uh, children and, and help them to, to grow up? You know, I'll show you a really quick story, I don't, and I'll, and I'll talk about my opinion of the medical field in general, of pediatrics, of its philosophy of death, of the fact that I have a cousin. She's, uh, about, um, in her early thirties, uh, wanted to have a child and, well, they had, she, during her pregnancy, they kept telling her and encouraging her to have an abortion, to kill the child. It was gonna be, have Down's syndrome, it was gonna have all, and she was just terrified and horrified, but, but she had the baby anyway. And the baby was supposed to have three fingers and they couldn't find a side of the brain, and they just terrified her, where she had the baby and the baby's normal. But they continued to tell her that it was gonna be, have issues. And, you know, I look at the baby today, you know, it's, it's three months old and it's just as normal, fingers, toes, laughing, you know, all the things that a, that a normal baby, uh, would bring. So I think that publicly, yeah, we need to have this conversation about abortion and about what it does to humanity and what, you know, and, and just reminds me, you know, of history, you know? It, it does what the Nazis did back in Germany. I mean, it just, we've really got to talk about it and bring it out. Really, that's my, my opinion anyways, but nonetheless, thank you very much.
Thank you, councilman, Dr. Councilman. Ricardo Pacheco, at this point? If not, we're gonna, yes, uh, councilman, Alejandra Avila, thank you.
First of all, I want to thank everybody for being up here and coming out to speak. I know it is not an easy subject. Um, I had mentioned before that Planned Parenthood had met with me to get their support. And I talked to them and I told them, as long as you're providing the services that you're providing and you take away the abortion piece, then you're welcome in our, in our city. But take away the abortion piece, um, they did say to me, that was, that was a major part of, of them opening the clinic. And so I said to them, and I did mention the church, like the, the mayor said, I me, I mentioned that they're right in front of a church, the Catholic Church is down the street, that the convent is down the street, and that the community, which is you, and it's what I see, we're not gonna be happy with them coming here. I was, uh, very verbal on telling them on what I agreed with them doing and what I disagreed, which is the abortion part of it. Because I am a mother and I am a grandmother and life is precious. I do also understand that women do have a choice and I do support their choices. I do understand that they need to do whatever they feel is right. However, I don't feel they're being educated enough of the choices that they are given by Planned Parenthood. And as, um, Mr. Pacheco's daughter said, you know, they need to be, have more information, provide maybe mental health and, and reassure them of what's going to happen. Let them know what's going to happen and then make a decision, because everybody has a right and they have a choice. I, I don't believe Planned Parenthood belongs in Baldwin Park. I think it belongs somewhere else because everybody has a choice and they choose to do whatever they want. We don't agree with abortion, there's people otherwise. So we need to respect everyone, but I just want you to know that I don't agree with Planned Parenthood being in the city of Baldwin Park. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, thank you. All right, I want to, first of all, thank everyone as well, and sorry about the, about the, the sticks, so, you know, in the future, you could bring them in without the actual sticks themselves. All righty, so at this point, I will go ahead now, um, we'll go over to Consent Calendar, we have items, uh, one, uh, through, uh, uh, seven, actually short. Council members wishing to pull any item?
Uh, move approval.
Move approval by Councilman Ricardo Pacheco.
Seconded.
It's seconded by Councilmember Hernandez. Uh, any objections? See, now so move. All right, so now we'll go over to the, uh, item number, um, actually, uh, item, uh, city council acting as successor agency of the dissolved community development commission, Consent Calendar. So item SA, SA one, a successor agency to dissolve community development commission of the city of Baldwin Park's treasure report, July twenty nineteen. Um, so at this point.
You want to pass?
I'll go ahead, yeah, make a motion, staff recommend the board receive and file treasure report. So that's my motion, it was seconded by Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco. Any objections, see, now so move. All right, so we have the, the public hearing, item eight, which is the five-year capital improvement project, CIP, budget for fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty, uh, twenty-three, uh, twenty-four. Staff recommend the city council open the public hearing and continue it to the next scheduled meeting. So at this point, I will open up the, uh, public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on the, uh, capital improvement project, this is the time to do so. Anyone speaking in favor? Oppose? See no interest, I now declare the public, uh, hearing closed, so that we'll come back to a future meeting.
Mayor, just on that topic.
Yes, sir.
Just for the, uh, so the public is aware that, uh, we have a number of, I'm not sure, uh, Sam, how much are we spending on, on those capital pro projects?
Eighteen million.
About eighteen million?
Yes, so the, the overall budget, uh, for the CIP program is, uh, eighteen million, two hundred and sixty-two thousand. That includes projects that were programmed last year and are being carried over to this year.
Awesome, and I just want to state that prior to this meeting, we had an open set, we had a, well, an open session, special meeting, talking about all the great projects that we're doing here. You're gonna start to see a lot of improvements throughout Ramona and, um, uh, Main Street and all the other areas in Baldwin Park. I mean, I can't name them all, but it's gonna be a lot of new streets, sidewalks, traffic signal upgrades. Uh, a lot of our staff worked very hard on it and, and I, I didn't want to just gloss over this, because I know in close session, we went through a list of, I don't know, about fifty, sixty projects, I think, that we did, that the city's going to spend, uh, over eighteen million dollars to, to improve our city. And also, we get criticized about not doing enough, but I know with our staff, with Sam, as long as you've been here, we're really moving a lot of things forward with your leadership. There's been a lot done and, um, you know, later on, I guess, we'll put on the website, just so people know what a fantastic job your staff is doing and working with all the city, uh, department heads to make sure that we really make our city look, uh, look beautiful, continue to improve. continue to improve. As, to note also, I know this project was probably done a few years back, but the, all the upgrades you did on the medians, on, on the Ramona, every time I saw, I saw it, it looks greater and greater as the trees grow and flourish. How you guys doing a fabulous job, so I just wanted to thank you for that.
All right, thank you, and good job, Sam. Thank you.
Sam, I especially want to thank you, the Frazier project, where we did all the improvements and the crosswalks, especially, I think it was very important that you added the audio to the crossing guard, because we do have a few disabled people in Baldwin Park that can't hear, or kids with special needs, so now adding that feature-
Thank you.
-especially around the areas, and I know you're going to add it in the downtown area, I think is what our city needed moving forward to make sure we provide services for everybody in our community. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for that. All right, so at this point, we went ahead and passed the motion, and, so I will go to item number nine, which is request direction for celebrate Baldwin Park anniversary parade. I'm going to go ahead and move a motion.
Second.
Second, any objections?
Excuse me, Mayor.
So move, all right, so let's-
Excuse me, for the CIP program, who did the motion and the second?
Oh, you don't know, I closed up the public hearing, no one, no one-
Oh, okay, so I motioned to approve-
Yes, motion, by, I, I went ahead and motioned, I was seconded by Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco, and there was no objections. All right, so thank you very much. At this point, reports of officers, oh, we went ahead and passed the motion for the parade, so it was a motion by, I motioned, seconded by Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco, no objections. Item 10, the review of commissioners, let's bring this back, please.
Yep.
That's my motion.
Second, thank you.
Any objections? See, none, so move. All right, so at this point, councilmembers have any questions?
Oh, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just want to know if that second building that was bought by Planned Parenthood, what is it zone four? Just want to make sure that, is it a medical center? You know the timing now, but-
Bring that back.
I believe it's the same zoning, but we'll verify that.
Okay, just verify, send that back.
All right, thank you.
Also, may I just, really quickly?
Yes, sir.
If, Sam, if you could look in, I know that there's some of the city properties that need to be cleaned up. There's one in particular, but it's right on the end of Big Dalton, where Big Dalton bends, goes along the freeway right behind Walmart and Old Fitness 19. We have a city property, and then there's another property next to it. The gentleman that owns that property next to it probably maintains the property a little better than ours, but I didn't really want to use it like a storage yard, I noticed that you put a lot of city bus, old bus stops and such, and because it's on the freeway frontage, it just kind of doesn't look that good. I don't know if you want to move them all the way back, or, or cover them somehow, just so it doesn't look so blighted, I, I think it just looks really, it doesn't look too good. And then also, to get back to us on the, on the underpass, on the plenty, I appreciate all the hard work you did, but I don't know what happened, if there's any like undergrowth, or what is the, what are going to use for sort of the ground cover? Is that something that's coming up and still growing, or is it, you know, you know, at what stage is that, so that we could see it a little bit better? Or do you know offhand, I'm not sure, it just doesn't look complete?
Yes, so the ground cover has been planted, according to plan, it's just going to take some time to grow. It is a fast-growing plant, so it should start, you should start seeing it pretty soon.
Okay. Also, if you could take down the, when they were doing the construction along that area, they had some detour signs, and they still have them up, so we just have someone drive through and take down the, the detour signs, I think they're, once those ramps close and the ramps open, you just get through there, look at that, appreciate it. All right, thank you.
Really quick, Sam, just to go back on what the gentleman said, Ramona Parkway, actually, I think it is a problem constantly, and it's because of those apartments that are there. I believe people are just moving in and out, and they're moving stuff out, as soon as we pick it up, more stuff comes out, so if we can just be vigilant of that particular area, all of Baldwin Park, but that area I noticed, because there is apartments, and that's what's happening, I think people are just leaving their stuff instead of taking them with them. Also, I want to thank you, because I don't know how many of you have noticed, the bins are back out in our city, where they collect clothing. There was one over there on Ramona and Foster Avenue, so I know there has to be, and, and a few years back, we had them removed, because it was creating a mess. Sam was very quick about making sure, when I drove by this afternoon, they were already removing it, because they do create a mess in our city, so thank you for that. And I'm sure, if I find more, I'll give you a call, but I'm sure they are just putting them everywhere in our city, make sure that they don't do that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you. All right, so at this point, before I open up the next committee, just to announce, it has required government code section 54952.3. Members of the city council are also members of the Board of Directors of the Housing Authority and Finance Authority, which are concurrently convening with the city council this evening, and each council member is paid an additional stipend of thirty dollars for attending the Housing Authority meeting, and fifty dollars for attending the Finance Authority meeting, so that's for the record. At this point, I'd like to open up the Housing Authority, and we have Consent Calendar's items one and two, I'll go ahead and make a motion to pass.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Hernandez. Any objections? See, none, so move. This point, I'd like to move for adjournment of the Housing Authority, that is my motion.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Hernandez. Any objections? See, none, so move. This point, I'd like to open up the Baldwin Park Finance Authority, and we have Consent Calendar's items one, which is the Treasury Report, July 2019. I will go ahead and motion to pass, that is my motion, seconded by Councilmember Hernandez. At this point, I will now go ahead and motion for adjournment of the Finance Authority, that is my motion. Hello?
Second.
Okay, all right. Seconded by Councilmember Hernandez. Any objections? If not, at this point, thank you, good evening, viva Baldwin Park. Catherine, thank you for being here.
Hey, Jean.
Sayala, do you have the, the schedule for the library?
Yes.
Okay, we have the schedule for libraries, I'll be calling you, Ms. Catherine, we'll get together, thank you. Okay, I got to get going.
I need more students.
Oh, are you kidding me? Ow.
Did you get that? No. You know, like, you just-
Huh? Okay. 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 Okay.[1625.65]